Go ahead and start recording. All right, I'm calling the meeting to order and uh we will do and more individuals are joining us. So we'll give it a second before I do roll call. We were having some um connection and link issues. So I think they're getting resolved. So I have, and I know Angela and Peter are trying to get on. So I think we'll just suspend with roll call at the moment. Angela and Peter are working to get online. Uh so we will start with the twenty twenty five comprehensive plan periodic update on the growth management ad. At act housing need allocation and Brad Madru. Uh there's Angela. So Brad, um you can go ahead if you're here to start.
Yes, thank you, everyone. Uh for today's discussion, we'll be talking about the housing needs allocation process, which is a state mandated process that we have to follow as part of our comprehensive plan periodic update. Uh we have uh staff from the Thurston Planning Commission, Thurston Regional Planning Council who will be joining us. Uh I see Michael Ambrosi and Allison Osterberg. Uh I believe Michael will be taking lead on the presentation and Allison will be here to help answer questions. Uh before turning this over to Michael, I want to just give a little bit of background. Uh as you are aware, we are in the middle of our periodic update process, which is uh due to be completed by June thirty of twenty five. Uh the Thurston Regional Planning Staff has graciously uh worked with all the planning staffs at the throughout Thurston County uh for all the larger jurisdictions, the other smaller jurisdictions were invited to participate. In twenty twenty one, the legislature passed a bill that requires the plant, the city to plan for and accommodate future housing that's affordable to a range of incomes. And to document the housing need the city is planning for as part of our periodic update process. Uh the good news is our current housing element in the and policies therein are basically support this idea that we need to be planning for all economic uh classes within the city for housing needs and so forth. What we're really doing here is uh we're now required by the state to show our work for that. Uh so that is what the process is. Uh as a group, the planning uh managers and the directors met uh four times starting in August to work out the process by which we would allocate the housing uh to each of the jurisdictions from the county level down. Uh and we did an initial briefing with the General Government Committee uh in earlier this month. And so this is just a informative uh briefing to start the process. Uh and then we'll be discussing next steps as part of the presentation. Michael, if you want to go ahead and start and share screen.
Great, thank you, Brad. Let me get my uh screen shared here. Take just a second here. Sorry, I got to disable the presenter view, whereas I can't see the zoom controls. All right, can everyone see that presentation?
Yes, it can.
Great, thank you. Good to have the confirmation. Okay, there we are. Now we're advancing. Great. So uh again, thank you, Brad, for having us here today, having Allison and I here. Just want to talk about uh House Bill twelve twenty, which is a new state requirement to look at uh housing needs. So um the intent of this law is that jurisdictions must plan for and accommodate housing affordable to all economic segments of the population. Now, planning for affordable housing is not something that is new to this region. All these plans and policies, these documents on the left include some reference to planning for low income households across all of all of Thurston County's jurisdictions. Like Brad said, now we have to show our work. So what's new about this process is that it's not enough to plan for affordable housing. We have to identify the the number of housing units in a certain number of um for affordable to a certain number of economic segments and document that as part of the comp plan updates. And the law is pretty specific about who we're actually planning for. For some of these terms might look familiar, moderate income, low income, very low income, extremely low income. These are all defined by Hut, the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And these income categories are defined by uh households' income relative to the region's median household income, which is about a hundred thousand dollars right around now, twenty thirteen. The law also requires us to plan for some specific housing types. So those include emergency shelter. That's housing for folks who are currently experiencing homelessness, emergency housing. So that would be for people who are at imminent risk of becoming homeless and then permanent supportive housing. So that's uh housing that has some wraparound services to help people stabilize their housing situation. So this chart shows uh how those income brackets are defined as well as the the equivalent household income range. But it's also helpful to look at um kind of, you know, put some typical jobs behind those numbers. So an extremely low income household, that would be someone who is in the agriculture industry on fixed income, very low income childcare, food preparation, landscaping professions. Low income would include vet techs, construction industry, as well as truck drivers. Uh and then we also have moderate income uh households who would be kind of nurses, plumbers, or uh kind of data analysts. We know the need is very, very great in our region. So right now, there's about a hundred and twenty one thousand homes that are in Thurston County. And this chart shows how many of those homes are affordable to households in these different income brackets. So about forty percent of our our housing stock in Thurston County is is currently affordable to a low income household. So that would be someone earning eighty percent of the area median income or less. Over the next twenty five years, uh we know that our region needs about fifty four thousand new housing units um across Thurston County, across all jurisdictions. And then this chart shows how many of those housing units we expect to need in each of the different income categories. So for some of these income categories, the need is quite acute. So per- permanent supportive housing, we need about twenty times as many housing permanent supportive housing units as we have right now. For very extremely low income households, that zero to thirty percent AMI is about triple the number. And for very low incomes, that thirty to fifty percent AMI, that's about a seventy percent increase in the number of housing units. And it's important to note that these numbers aren't, they're not targets. Uh this is intended to be a realistic projection of how many housing units are need uh in each of these income brackets. So what does it mean to not to meet that need? It just means that, you know, uh future residents in Thurston County are likely to be cost burdened and not be able to afford their housing. So meeting these numbers is more about ensuring that everyone has an affordable place to live rather than meeting a specific target.
Councilmember source that, you raise your hand.
Oh, yeah, your question.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if you wanted to wait till the end or.
No, feel free to chime in as we go.
That last chart. So um so it looks like um over the hundred and twenty percent that we need sixteen thousand more homes for people that are in the upper income bracket. Is that what what we're looking at? So I find that amazing, interesting compared to our perception is always in the lower end, but we need twice as many homes for people in the higher bracket.
I think you're correct on that. This law doesn't actually require jurisdictions to identify uh housing need for those higher income households, but we include it here just so that all the numbers will add up to the total. But I think the message here is that we need more housing of all types. So we need more low income, moderate income, and higher income housing. So, you know, we a lot more of everything to meet their future population growth.
Yeah, and very quickly, I I like for council members, Martha, uh we we've had this discussion over the past few years about what it means to increase the overall housing supply in the city. If we don't do that, the folks that are in the hundred and twenty percent AMI will basically be looking at those units that would be uh for those folks on the lower end of the the AMI. So we need more housing period just to sort of push everybody, you know, create enough uh housing for everybody so that those in the higher brackets aren't looking for housing than taking away those potential opportunities for others.
And Brad, Brad, I think that that's happening hmm already. Um because you know, our military, our military personnel are in those higher brackets and you know, we just can't find enough housing for them. So we're at that level already.
Exactly.
So this chart shows the countywide housing need, but the question remains, what is the need for each of the cities and jurisdictions in Thurston County? So Commerce gives jurisdictions uh quite uh gives jurisdictions quite a bit of uh discretion as to how they want to approach the kind of city, town, and unincorporated county need. Uh there's just a couple of things that we have to do. We have to make sure that the, you know, the city needs adds up to the total countywide need. Um and then Commerce also recommends that we use kind of a multi-jurisdictional collaborative approach to determining uh that the allocation for the city in jurisdiction level. So the process so far, Brad kind of touched on this a little bit, but uh planning managers from the cities of Lacey, Olympia, Tom Water, Yelm, Thurston County, as well as Tenino worked with TRBC. So TRBC facilitated this process with the different jurisdictions to review some different allocation methods. Uh we've reviewed some methods provided by Commerce as well as uh those used by different counties who are kind of further ahead in this process. And then that work group kind of uh debated the different uh allocation methods and then reached consensus on a staff preferred method. So again, TRBC's role was to facilitate the process and provide the data analysis, and then we let it left it to the work group to make any of the decisions there. Um the next steps, Alison and I are currently presenting this information to all the jurisdictions as well as the Regional Housing Council. And at the end of the process, we'll ask TRBC, our council, to approve the staff recommended allocations. And then the real work begins because then that information needs to be incorporated incorporated into the comprehensive plan updates and to inform the policies that go into uh city and county housing elements. So the staff work group that TRBC facilitated, we really decided that there were three kind of key values that we wanted to inform the process. So as we were looking at all these different allocation methods, we wanted a method that was fair, you know, that gave recognize that all jurisdictions play a role in housing low income households, not just one. We wanted a process that was clear, something that could be replicated in the future, that was easy to communicate to the public, as well as something that was tailored to individual jurisdiction needs, uh took into account current boundaries and annexations. We also wanted a process that was collaborative, so something that worked with existing structures like the Regional Housing Council, uh comprehensive plan updates and the countywide planning policies. We want it to be consistent with the work of all these uh multi-jurisdictional groups. We also wanted a uh allocation method that was supported by all jurisdictions. So that was a key component here. So all told, we reviewed uh two different allocation methods that were provided by the Department of Commerce. And we also spoke with staff from King County, Kitsap County, Pierce, and Snohomish Counties. Just because of the comp plan cycles, they're a little bit further ahead in this process, and we wanted to kind of understand, you know, how do you approach this process? So I want to kind of give an overview of some of the different allocation methods, and I think that's really best illustrated by looking at kind of a real simple kind of example county. So here we have a county that has just uh two cities. Uh one city has predominantly blue housing units, the other has predominantly orange housing units. And just for the sake of argument, we're going to say that both of these cities are projected to need four new housing units. Those would be those one in gray. And the Department of Commerce has told us that four of those new units need to be blue and four need to be orange. So one method, and this is the method, this is called method A in the Commerce Guidance, would just to say, you know, half of the housing units uh in this county need to be orange. So half of the new housing units in each jurisdiction will be orange and half will be blue. So two orange, two blue in each city. This is actually the approach that was taken by uh both Pierce County and Kitsap County, and it's probably the simplest method uh just data wise to approach this this question. What you'll see here is that, you know, it doesn't address the fact that there's kind of existing discrepancies in housing. So when all this housing is built, that first city will still have more blue housing units and the second one will still have more orange units. Kind of the flip side of this is to say, well, we're going to allocate all four of those orange housing units to uh the first town. And all the new blue units will go to the second unit, the second town. And this means that in twenty forty five, when all these new units are constructed, both cities will have four orange and both will have or or excuse me, six orange and both will have six blue. So the uh there's an equal share for both current and future housing units. This method was a was a little bit complicated and none of the counties that we spoke with actually took this approach. And Commerce gives uh counties a lot of discretion in how to approach this problem. So they also allow you to kind of take a hybrid approach and kind of come up with your own method for how for allocating the housing need. And this is how uh Snohomish County and King County approached the problem. And in the end, it was the methodology used by Snohomish County that the staff work group really felt uh was best for the Thurston region. Really met those three values of clear, cooperative, and um fair. Uh this is a um fairly simple as method is based on that method A, but it does give some credit to jurisdictions that currently have a higher share of affordable housing right now. So if your share of affordable housing now is a little bit higher than the county average, you're um allocated a slightly lower amount of affordable housing in that income bracket. So it meets that um based on method A kind of gives credit to some jurisdictions with a lot of low income housing right now. Also has no negative allocations, which was a problem with um the method B. And it matches up to the county totals in the jurisdiction projections, which was important. And it can be easily replicated in the future. This was kind of a problem with King Counties. King County took a more complicated approach. Use a lot of outside data sources that we didn't really have easy access to and be difficult to develop. So I go to that Snohomish County method that prevailed. So let's look at some of the numbers for Tom Water, some of the results of that preferred allocation method for the city of Tom Water. So right now, or in twenty twenty, uh the city of Tom Water had about eleven thousand housing units in the city limits and about twelve hundred in the UGA. Total about twelve thousand. Over the next twenty five years, uh Tom Water is projected to need about sixty six hundred housing units, twenty five hundred in the UGA for a total need of about nine thousand housing units. And these projections are coming from TRBC's population, employment, and housing projections, which was which were adopted in twenty eighteen. So it's a pretty significant increase, about sixty percent increase in housing in the city, about a double the amount of housing in the UGA and about seventy five percent overall. So this first chart, excuse me, this first chart um shows a percent of housing on the ground right now in twenty twenty uh within the city of Tom Water i- in each of these different income categories that we've been talking about. So you can see that about um let's say about fifty percent of housing in Tom Water is affordable to a low income household. So that's uh one earning about eighty percent of the area median income, those orange, orange colored brackets. And that's a little bit, a slightly higher share than the county as a whole. So again, this is the housing stock that's on the ground right now. This second chart shows the future housing need. So over the next twenty five years, you know, we know that Tom Water is going to need about sixty six hundred new housing units. And this shows the percent of housing units in each of those income categories. So um looking at those lower income categories, again, those orange ones, about eighty percent in the area median income or less. That again makes up, you know, roughly similar to what's on the ground right now, about fifty percent of the future housing need. And again, that's a little bit lower than the countywide share. And finally, I just want to show not just the city of Tom Water, but show how these allocations compare across jurisdictions. So this chart shows the percentage of low income housing. How much of that future housing need is allocated to each jurisdiction? So both Olympia and Lacey um are allocated about thirty percent of low income housing overall. Tom Water has about eighteen percent and the city and UGA combined, uh Yelm a little bit less at fifteen. And then the remaining of the low income housing is allocated to the rural unincorporated county as well as our smaller South County communities. So I touched on the fact that, you know, this region's done a lot of work on addressing the the need for low income housing and affordable housing. When we're looking at these numbers here, is this these housing allocations, this is really the beginning of the broader process of updating the comprehensive uh plan updates. So these are the numbers that are supposed to inform the policies that will go into the housing elements. And I'm going to pass it over to Brad to talk a little bit about um Tom Water's plans for for updating complaints.
Thank you, Michael. If you go to the next slide, thank you. Uh the Commerce has graciously prepared a a lot of paper uh to guide this process. Now, I'm being a little uh facetious about that. It's actually really good, good stuff that they put together. So uh on our comprehensive plan update webpage, we have posted all of the estate guidance materials for the update. And uh for the housing especially, we're focusing on two uh of the the guidance materials primarily. The first is the guidance for updating our housing element. Uh it is uh sort of like the from start to finish, now that we have the allocation, what do we do with our existing uh uh element? What do we need to be looking at? How do we need to be looking at that? And how do we need to presenting the information that we have? Another requirement that we have as part of this update process is to address racially disparate impacts in the community. And that requires an additional process that is going to be happening at the very same time we're doing the regular update for the housing element. Uh the good thing about this is, number one, it it translates also across to other elements in the complex. So we'll be using basically parts of this across uh updating our land use element and other things because it's a, it's a good way of looking at how potentially policies and regulations could be impacting communities, and we don't really realize that. But this gives us a a means for asking the appropriate question. Uh Councilmember Ogabi.
Thank you very much. Before we uh go too far into this, I I have some few questions about the methodology that was being used in um in arriving at need. And also, just from my understanding, so when we're talking about the low income housing, are we talking about uh multi-dwelling units and not single uh family units?
We're talking, uh well, first of all, and Michael can help, and I'll start. Uh what it comes down to is what kind of unit could somebody afford? If we're in an area that's not having a lot of growth pressure that has an excess amount of housing, single family could be potentially affordable those to those who are eighty percent and under for the AMI. Uh we're no longer in that situation. We have a lot of growth pressure. We have a lot of people trying to move into the area. Uh so that is no longer an available option. So one thing that we're probably going to have to take a good look at is how do we allow for the development of more potential multifamily units, which in turn are the more affordable units uh as part of this process. We have a lot of, we have a lot of work to do ahead of us for that, but that's, that's the general thought that we're having is we're we're taking a look at what the numbers look like and what our guidance material says.
Okay, so the uh the other part of that question is, in determining your um population base, are you basing this on the age cohort? See, for example, if I say um multi-dwelling or housing in general for Tom Water resident, we would start from uh eighteen to uh whatever. Because obviously, somebody who's ten years are just not going to give up for to buy or rent a house or an apartment. So are we using a age cohort for that category to make this determination?
We're looking at a couple of different factors. One thing that we do know uh is that, number one, we have a population that we have to account for as part of this planning process as well as uh housing need uh that's been allocated. We've also been tracking uh household size as part of our planning process. Uh and one thing that we're definitely aware of is uh our household size has actually been increasing uh in the past ten to fifteen years rather than decreasing, which is kind of what I would have expected. Uh so you're correct. As part of this process, we're going to need to be aware that if we do do multifamily, we need to also make sure that we do so in a way that provides for uh larger households, uh families with children and so forth, uh as well as on the, on the other end, the seniors who are going to need special uh things as part of their housing. So we have a, we can't focus on one thing and call it good. We have to focus on all of the different uh breakdowns across the age groups.
Thank you very much.
Next slide, please. So the first phase, now that we are, I I have the numbers and we can start the process is we are uh looking at identifying the barriers and limitations to housing production. That means what are the things that we have currently in our zoning, uh in our development regulations? Other things that we could be looking at to make changes to allow for more efficient housing production. Is I've always, whenever I talk about a single topic like housing or uh trees or gophers and so forth, I always have to use the word balance because I do account, we we need to account for the fact that the city has multiple priorities and so forth. We, we're going to have an interesting time trying to rectify everything and make sure all this works together. So I'm going to be honest and say, we're not going to make everybody happy here. Uh we're going to try to make as many people happy, and so they leave me alone, allow me to leave work at night. I'd appreciate that. Uh but we just, we have a lot of work to do to identify those things. The other part, and this is where we get into the racially disparate impact studies, we also have to look at our policies and regulations to see what is potentially contributing to uh racially disparate impacts, displacements, and exclusion in housing. Uh this is also a new thing that we need to be accounting for. But so before we can do any formal planning or get farther, we need to understand where we are uh and go from there. Next slide, please. After we have that background work, we'll be going into work documenting our programs and actions to achieve housing availability. This is where things like working with the Regional Housing Council, uh the council's priorities of dealing with affordable housing and homelessness, all those things come into play and feed into this, including our housing action plan. From that, we'll be spending time next year developing our goals, policies, and objectives. Uh we're going to be including a lot of implementation things as part of this uh and assigning basically who is going to be responsible, when, and reporting and monitoring will be a much greater part of the uh the comprehensive plan process than it probably has been in the past. Again, we're also going to be identifying and implementing policies and regulations to address and begin to undo racially disparate impacts, displacement, and exclusion in housing. So we're, we've got a couple tracks that we'll be following at the same time for both of these things. In addition to that, we're going to be establishing some anti-displacement policies that will support that. Next slide, please. So our.
Brad, Brad, I have a question. I have a question on a previous slide.
All right, Michael, could you go back? Thank you.
Okay, identifying and implementing policies and regulations to address and begin to um and et cetera, et cetera. So it seems like housing policies are now mandated by law. Is that correct?
Uh the state has mandated specific things that we need to pay attention to as part of our housing policy and regulation development, yes.
Okay, and I'm thinking about uh last week's council meeting when we had that discussion about the um the, the sleeping of the of the houseless at parks. Um so would that have something to do with this mandate coming down? Is is that the discussion that we're starting to have in the in the community at our level?
It it's related to that, the the specific issue dealing with homelessness and basically making sure that housing or uh an opportunity for some shelter is available before being able to move somebody off of particular properties. That is actually coming down from a federal uh appellate court decision uh called the Boise decision, which basically says for western states in the United States, uh you have to follow a particular process before you can have people move along if they're homeless. You have to offer them uh a shelter, and if they don't take shelter, that's a different matter, but if you have to be able to offer them shelter. One of the things, however, that we have to deal with on the state level is, and Michael touched on this earlier, is we need to account for and develop policies that support the development of emergency housing uh and emergency supportive housing. So basically, uh in our community, we need to figure out how, what do we need to do on a policy level and other actions to make it easier for those kinds of uses to uh be placed in the community. Uh so that, that's part of that process, and that's also kind of the coordination side for the Regional Housing Council is to look at ways to help that happen. Uh if you recall, we had, uh I believe at the end of last year, we had the the emergency housing ordinance that was passed. Uh that was a state requirement that we basically allow for those kinds of uses in any zone that allows for residential use in the city uh to various degrees, depending upon the kind of uh emergency housing we're talking about. But so we've laid some of the groundwork for that, but we now need to take a closer look on the policy side to make sure that we're not doing anything that basically prevents that from happening. So we'll be taking a closer look at that part of the policy.
Okay, thanks, Brad.
Uh can I ask that council members raise their hand? It's hard to see, recognize people when we're in the little screens, so and wait to be called on. Thank you.
Michael, next slide. So our plan development schedule right now is we have uh scheduled times to meet with our planning commission uh specifically on the housing element, and we'll be doing that three times, uh at least three times next year. I don't anticipate that three times will be enough, but I think that's what we're going to be starting with. At the very same time, we're going to be involving the General Government Committee is part of that work. So basically, uh using the General Government Committee is the means for letting the council know what the planning mission is working on. So we can have some interaction between both groups to try to make sure that uh we don't go too far out on one side, that we're answering questions that are raised by both groups, those kinds of things. So we'll be having uh briefings with the General Government Committee as well as the Planning Commission during this time. In addition to that, we're going to be looking for. In addition to that, we're gonna be looking for opportunities to meet with the uh whole council for work sessions on specific topics. We haven't identified specific issues yet that we want to meet with you on or the times for that, but we definitely think that will come out of the process. What we're dealing with is part of the planning commission and the general government process. So just be aware that those things will be on the agenda. Next slide, please. Uh phase three will be our legislative adoption process for all of this work. Uh that will be starting November of next year, so that means we have one year to get all this done. Yes, it will happen. Otherwise, I think Mike will. Be looking for a new planning manager. Um but we're looking forward to uh the. The uh there's gonna be a pretty extensive public process as part of all this as well. And first of all, the community open houses. We have a community survey that's currently uh ongoing. That uh residents will be receiving a postcard uh first part of December, letting them know that it's available. Uh we've had an excellent response rate so far, over a hundred and sixty, I believe, people have responded to that. Uh a lot of issues have been raised as part of that. A lot of very detailed responses have been received as well. We'll be sharing that. Once we have more information uh on that. Next slide, please. And that concludes my part of the uh presentation. Do you have any general questions for myself or for Michael?
Any questions? Councilmember Dahlhoff and then councilmembers for that.
Thank you, Mayor. The one thing is in this slide, you need. We, I saw fair. Um where does the conversation of like equity inequality come in to that larger discussion? How did it come down to fair? And what does that mean for equity inequality?
Michael, if you could go back to that one slide. This one? Yes, thank you, yeah. So a lo- a little further background on this, this was the process when the uh the city, the planning. Managers and directors met, we wanted to make sure that we had some discussion of what it means, uh what what are the things that we want to express as part of this process? Uh and the fair component gets at the equality side because we want to make sure that. Number one, uh that each jurisdiction takes its fair share of of all the economic groups that are in the community. We want to make sure that there's not. One group that is going to be responsible for planning for and dealing with. Uh things that it may have been on a historic basis, they may have taken the bulk of those kinds of of uses. Uh but we wanted to recognize that all the communities in Thurston County have their responsibility, have the. Uh the basically, they they have the responsibility to do something uh to change that. And that also means that the the good thing, and I want to emphasize again, is our policy background in our housing element. Really does support all of the 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 equity stuff uh that we have been talking about in recent years. Uh it just under a different name, meaning that a lot of the discussion about, we need to make sure that if we're providing for all income groups, we need to make sure that it's. Being done uh appropriately for all groups and so forth, is really there already in the policy background. This is sort of pulling that out. And applying it directly just to this housing allocation process. I think. Uh getting what about your point as we go into the process as part of the update for the housing element. This is where the whole discussion and the process laid out for dealing with racially disparate impacts comes in because that gives us a process. And some things that we really need to be looking for uh as at particular points so that we're doing the update. Uh so I'm 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 thinking that, you know, we're in a pretty good shape in terms of guidance and and how to do this process. Uh we're just gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of work uh and how we actually come out with that, um it'll be part of that process.
Yeah, I appreciate that clarity and that connection with what we're already doing. So thank you, Brad.
Uh councilmember for that.
So I was kind of jumping ahead and I was looking at the tables and so um. On the methods, did we, you're talking about method, because it shows method C, but I thought you were saying that uh we were looking at. Method A, is that the one as far as how does that correspond to these tables?
Apologize, method C is the third option that we looked at, which is the preferred allocation method of the work group.
Oh, so that'll be the preferred, okay. Um and then my other question is that. I know there's some discussion like not um having more uh only single family homes built and then. Um and then also, I guess I'm looking at choices because um. You know, before we couldn't get people to build apartments in Tom Water, now we're gonna have, you know, thousands of apartments coming in, but I. When we talk about trying to, you know, that might be great for some people and that's the choice that they'd like to, you know, live in apartments, but those that want to have, you know. Uh have generational wealth, that they start to build um their own wealth that um. What is, what choices can be available? Are we gonna set? Limits on that? I mean, is that how into the weeds we're gonna get on this or is it just? Um is it just beds? So we're just looking at um housing units and not looking at what kind of housing units we're asking for, because. You know, we'll just, anyway, I hope that makes sense.
No, it it does. And and number one, we're looking at housing units that are affordable. And how that breaks down depends upon the supply and a few other factors. If we are able to basically demonstrate that we have, we're gonna have more than adequate supply, I anticipate, you know, we'll have a greater range of potential. New housing types that are gonna be allowed, uh well, are gonna be built. Um if we have issues with making sure that we provide for everyone, we're gonna be having to do some tweaks and how we uh. What kind of units we build. Now, one thing that. We're fortunate that hopefully the state is moving closer in the direction of of freeing up the condominium laws and a few other things, so. Rather than looking at homeownership, meaning I have to own a single family detached house. There are other mechanisms for ownership uh that aren't necessarily tied to that single family house. Uh and I'm hoping that there's further clarification done by the state legislature to really sort of strengthen that to allow for that to be used more. Because I think moving ahead in the future, there's gonna have to be, I mean, you're correct. Uh the the number one way most people are saving for retirement is the home that they're living in as an asset. And that value of an asset needs to be translatable, you know, beyond just a single family house into some, it could be part of a condo as part of a larger. Development, all those kinds of things need to be more on the table than they currently are. Having said that. We don't really have a mechanism that we can say we're gonna plan specifically for that. We we can't regulate necessarily the ownership or the rental of a unit, for example. Uh that's a the choice made by the homeowner, that we don't have rent control, for example, in the state, all those kinds of things. So the decision. On that is left more to the market than to the city. But we can definitely do things on the legislative side and others to try to support mechanisms for allowing for ownership on a broader level.
Thank you, because I see us like maybe getting more apartment heavy than we are, you know, going that direction now than maybe what, like you're just saying that. Um having condos or townhouses, exactly, working with um Habitat for Humanity, looking for. The pe- things that people, you know, they really want to own their own home. And so um. And even with Habitat, they're, you know, doing that townhomes now, so they've got more um options for their residents too, but it just seems like, you know, there's just such a. A group of people that really do want to own, have their own property, their own place, so.
That's the, that's another, you brought up another, that's a good point that I should probably should be making. We're also required by the state to plan more for middle housing. Uh meaning something between single family and the larger multifamily developments. So that's duplexes, triplexes, quads, all those kinds of things which lend themselves more. To individual ownership perhaps than other things. So we definitely will be looking at opportunities for that. I mean, the the example you use for the Habitat for Humanity, doing the. Uh the the townhouse development isn't, is actually a really good example, what kind of thing in between that we also need to be. You allowing for in the community.
Any other questions? Alright, so Brad, I take it that we will be hearing a lot more about this topic.
Yes, it won't be going away.
Great, alright, well, thank you very much. Alright, um and then Brad, you're staying for the next one. Uh in our local agreement with the regional housing council for the Franz Anderson project.
Yes, and uh joining me is Susenda Seltis with the City of Olympia, formerly with uh Thurston County. Uh we have uh before you an interlocal agreement with the regional housing council for the Franz Anderson project in the city of Olympia. Uh it's located just north of the Pacific Avenue interchange in uh in East Olympia. Uh our request for the planet, uh for the uh council tonight is that you uh. Have a, will give a presentation on what the proposed use is. Uh we ask that the interlocal agreement be placed on the consent calendar for your next regular meeting. Um and uh this is a project that the, we've discussed with you already. Uh back in uh April and May, uh we discussed uh requested a letter of commitment. Uh for committing a portion of the city's general government dollars towards the project. Um at the uh general government committee meeting and then again, uh the city council approved that letter in May. Uh we're on to the next stage of the process and I'll have uh you send up a little more background on this and then we're available for any for any questions that you may have. You send it.
Good afternoon, council. Again, just sent to Seltis with City of Olympia. And so I will try to bring um somewhat brief. Uh but this is a property that Thurston County and the City of Olympia partnered with um. Or partnered uh together in twenty twenty two, I believe. Um to purchase the property with the intent of using it for affordable housing. Um so since that time, City of Olympia, uh almost a year ago now, I'm early January of this year. And put out a solicitation to solicit a um developer for the property. And uh to develop permanent supportive housing on that property. And Lehigh Low Income Housing Institute was selected through that process. And they are now at a time where we have a purchase and sell agreement with them and they're actively pursuing other funding. And as part of um this discussion, kind of from the beginning with this being identified for affordable housing. Excuse me, um city of Tom Water here, city of Lacey in Thurston County. Uh through the regional housing council. Um have all discussed uh partnering, not only uh to to, you know, buy and um help Lehigh. Develop, but again with the the financing piece as well. Um so we are at a point now where this interlocal, um. All jurisdictions have, uh the the legal um experts have weighed in and helped put this together. Um it has gone through our City of Olympia um city council. Uh earlier this month, um Thurston County has, I'm taking it to their board of county commissioners. And been approved for their three point five million in ARPA funds. Um Lacey is scheduled to take it to their city council, I believe, early next month. Um and we are kind of on track for executing this agreement. That um does two really big things. Um one for uh Thurston County specifically allocates the ARPA funds, those are the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Um those need to be committed by a certain time, so this ILA allows the county to meet that deadline. Um and then secondly, again, um region wide pools about six point seven million for development of that property. Into a permanent supportive housing, that is um seventy one units. Uh designated again for individuals who are um with an income up to thirty percent of area median income. Uh mostly, you know, just single adults, uh largely many of those will be many if not most all. Um of those units will be uh filled through coordinated entry. Um and uh likely filled by those individuals that are being relocated off of state rights of way. Um as well as those that have already been located off of state right rights of way into the adjacent um. Tiny home village that is currently operating. Uh so the plan is this is kind of the the continuum of that effort, um you know, from from rights ways. To per uh excuse me, um tiny home villages and then to a permanent supportive housing unit with supportive services provided. Um at this time, again, Lehigh is continuing to move forward in this process. They have sought. State funding, housing trust fund um funds. And are um actively pursuing low uh low income housing tax credits. And um if those awards are successful. Uh the plan is that they would be closing on their financing uh next fall. And then starting development with that likely um wrapping up in a fifteen to eighteen month time period periods. We're looking at these units. Coming online and probably um late two thousand twenty six. And available for any questions. Sorry, that that wasn't super brief, um but wanted to give you all a full background.
Councilmember Jefferson.
Yes, um thank you for that. Um as we continue to work on this issue in our community, I would like to know. How is um the tiny house villages? How are they working? Um can you share some data with us next time? The individuals that are coming through, how long they are staying there? I'd like to know that.
That's something we can definitely work uh as part of one of our discussions on the housing related topic for a work session for next year. Um I know the city of Olympia has a different, uh they they have different uh. Kinds of villages doing different things, run for different aims. So I think that would be valuable information to be to talk about. We can definitely work with the county and the city of Olympia to get that.
Thanks, Brad. Since this is an extension of that investment, I'd just like to know how things are going. Thank you.
Uh councilmember for that.
Oh, thank you. Um so I did have a question um on page four of the agreement. They talk about Maple Court. And I wasn't sure what Maple Court was, because it talks about um. Exiting Maple Court until Maple Court has been converted from an enhanced shelter to permanent supportive housing. So I wasn't sure what what's Maple Court.
So as part of the right of way initiative with the state of Washington, where uh the governor has uh basically told the. Departments of Commerce, the State Patrol and Transportation. Uh that they need to come up with a plan for moving those who are uh homeless off of the state right of ways. Uh funds were provided through that program to purchase uh the former Days Inn. In Lacey, which is uh near College and um Martin Way. Uh that has been uh been converted uh into that temporary housing to support that population. Uh and it's, I believe it, it opened this summer, uh and I believe it's now full, if I recall, but with the the uh. It it has been, all those spaces have now been occupied, it's over a hundred. Um the next phase of that project is that the hope is that um. But the folks that are living there will be able to move up and out to other better uh housing opportunities. And then at some point, the conversion of that Maple Court into a more permanent supportive housing facility would be uh would occur. Um you said it, did I capture that properly or am I just making up some stuff at the end there?
No, Brad, you did great.
So the other, so is Lehigh providing um? The the supportive services there uh to that, currently to that Maple Court?
Correct, they were awarded the contract by the state to do that.
Okay, and so there's other parts in here that I'm kind of concerned about, because it says that Lehigh will use its best efforts to have. CMR Community Health Centers provide behavioral services for tenants. Um and so I, you know, I like air quotes for best effort, so um. Does it mean they will or just they'll try or, um you know, what does that mean? Best efforts?
Brad, I can, I can answer that if you prefer. Um when we, when City of Olympia, uh so we issued us uh essentially a request for proposals. Um to find the the developer and Lehigh's proposal. Um included a partnership, uh so part of our request was that they identify who would provide those services. Um because permanent supportive housing, uh the definition, the state definition, um that, you know, the definition we're all working off of. And provides those supportive services. So Lehigh proposed working with CMAR. Um in their proposal to us that we selected um and provided with their proposal, um essentially like a letter of partnership. Uh so the intent is that they would partner with CMAR. That being said, um Lehigh itself as an agency has many years. Working in um this field with both development and providing services. So there are several properties that they manage where they themselves provide services. Um so the intent is that they would partner with CMAR. Um but we're still fairly early in that process and wanted to be sure that we called out um kind of a reference to what was included in their proposal to us. Uh but not back them into something if something were to needed to change. Uh, but not back them into something if something were to, needed to change and they um, had a need to provide them sort of, the services themselves.
So I realize this is probably not comparing the same thing, but I think about the facility that was open downtown that um. The St. Pete's had opened, and that was supposed to be. And um, an area where, you know, people could come in and get immediate services and there were, you know, like. Um, they're supposed to have had my medical people and, you know, different staff, but that was never. It didn't seem like that came to fruition, then it ended up closing, so I'm, you know, how does this? When you see something like that, how will this translate to, you know, an even bigger project uh, doing these houses? You know, can you afford, will we see a failure in this, you know, after what we've already seen that happened down to town?
Can I help in here, C M R, or I'm sorry, uh, Lehigh has done a lot of projects, including the Plum Street. With some uh, tiny homes, Billy, so. Uh, they have a lot of experience and I'm sure that they can probably bring partners on that will be able to. Do that, but I, and I, what I'm understanding is that. They're not wanting to just strictly limit themselves to uh. That particular one, and they have, and I know that they do a lot of those services themselves, so.
All right, I think I might be able to provide a little bit of insight too, do you mind if I also answer, Eileen? Okay, uh, I, I, I think the other thing, you know, I think there are a lot of reasons why. The facility you're referencing downtown ran into challenges and I, I, I think that. There's no one answer for why that was the case, um, what, one of those things could be that. That facility was sort of set up to appear to. I, it was kind of used as like a day use facility, as a warming facility. And was used for all sorts of ancillary uses where people could just drop in. And I, I think that's distinguishable from what we're talking about here, where we're talking about. Res, more residence based, where individuals have a set place, where it's like, this is where I'm going to find. Um, this is where I am assigned shelter at this, you know, particular piece of this property and location. I think it's a little distinguishable in that sense, because. That, that downtown spot was kind of the only place to go, it was right next to the bus stop to get to Franz Anderson, you need to endeavor to go get to Franz Anderson. You're not just gonna like, hop off the bus and then walk inside to get some coffee to come out of the rain. So I, I think it's a little distinguishable in that sense.
I, I think it'd be interesting too to find out um, the success of Maple Court, how that's going to get an update on that, because. Because Lehigh is managing that one as well as far as supportive services, right? They're up there in, at Maple Court, in the, the old day, uh, the old hotel that um, it's up in Lacey, right? Is that what we're talking about? That's what it's called now?
Uh, and they literally, I think we literally filled uh, all the units by the beginning of this month or late October. So we will be able to say, you know, how are things going with the full facility and so forth, in probably four or six months. Uh, we're mostly now, since it's a brand new facility, everything else is sort of working out, we wanna, we wanna give them a little bit of time to see how. You know, let things settle before we do an evaluation.
Yeah, I, I just, with, just considering, I mean to be a negative Nellie, but it's just um. Having been up there and then shopping in that area, and then having some of the businesses be concerned that how successful is this? How successful is this for, you know, getting people um, on the right path and, you know, um. You know, on the right direction as far as um, to their next step, and so. That's, you know, that's a concern, um, I think.
Yeah.
To be considered as well, so.
Yeah, no, I think that's a valid concern, I think that number one, it involves the management and handling of the facility itself internally. And then also how that works with the City of Lacey and the City of Olympia's. Uh, in terms of how the impacts and so forth are addressed, so. Uh, again, let's give it a little bit of time just to see what it looks like and how that functions. Uh, but you're correct, this is gonna be, it's a complex thing that, that's gone yet, so.
And then my last question is the six point seven million, is that like from start to finish, is that designed to like? You know, the, the opening of units, is that gonna cover the entire cost of, you know, from start to finish?
That will not, no, so the six point seven is what is um, kind of proposed locally to be committed. Um, to that project for development. Um, the total um, anticipated cost. At this point is, I believe, right around, I think maybe like twenty-five million, so that is a very small amount of, of the funding. Uh, the remaining of the funding, um, that funding balance is likely to come from the state, from again, the housing trust fund. Uh, and low income housing tax credit programs. Um, which also are accompanied uh, with those, those state funding. I'm assuming, you know, that they are successful in those cycles. Um, the state would also be uh, monitoring, um, the. You know, the project, uh, making sure that, you know, all the same things that we're all concerned about. That services are being provided, that it's affordable, that it's accessible. Um, that it's safe and healthy uh, for a significant amount of time.
Okay, because it looked like it was gonna be up and running, the way it um, that they would have it up and running by um, twenty, is it twenty twenty-six? I think that that was the.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Great, any other questions? Uh, Councilmember Altosir.
I, I guess I just, I'll do the thing where I make a comment instead of saying I have a question and. Phrasing an arbitrary question, I just wanna, you know, express my support for the project generally. Um, we've been talking about it a long time on this council, we've been talking about it for the regional, at the regional housing council level for a long time. Um, there, there will be Tom Water residents who utilize these services when we build them. And that's going to be services that are utilized outside our city borders, um, I think that's a, a big deal. And we, we don't have really a project of this nature in our city, maybe we will one day, who knows? But, but this is like a, I, I think a really important. Regional project for the future, and I just want to express my support for it. Because it's, it's a pretty important piece of the strategy to be, to be able to get folks off the street and into shelter.
Do I hear any um, any issues with putting this on the consent calendar for our next council meeting? So, it looks like it's a go, so I guess we will go ahead and put that on our consent agenda items for our next council meeting. So thank you very much. All right, next item is the EPA Community Wide Assessment Grant. And Ecology Integrated Planning Grant Update, and uh, Austin Ramirez will be presenting. Joan, do you have a question, sorry? You're unmute, you're unmute.
Before we leave these uh, two items that we've just talked about, uh, about housing. I wanted to go back to what Councilmember Swarthow mentioned in the first. Thing we talked about, uh, I really, really resonates with me, people being able to establish ownership. As uh, the wealth for the future and their families and so on and so forth. And since this is gonna need, Tom was gonna need to talk about this, like Brad says, and do some. Hard work here in the next year on this and clarify things and so forth. I was wondering if maybe we could make Tom Water looking toward emphasizing. Uh, you know, continuing some of our multi-housing, but looking toward. Um, this, some different kind of housing, whether that's condominiums or cottage housing or on and on. Something where people are encouraged and, and could be able to own. If that could be some part of our strategy and, and conversation. And kind of let that be known in, in the. Partenance of the housing conversations and so forth, that we, we wanna look into it, possibly emphasize it. And look how that would fit with our future uh, development in Tom Water.
I'm pretty sure Brad heard you on that, and I'm sure that will be in the discussion, we have a lot of zoning for like cottage housing and a lot of those things, we just need to get somebody to start building them.
But we, I think that we need to emphasize that we see that just building apartments after apartment after apartment is not appealing to all people. Nor is it affordable for all people. And also that there are people, if we've got people in this category that can afford purchase, we need to be letting. The builders or the community or whatever know that we intend to work toward that, uh, that goal. I, I, I just think, you know, different cities have different things they wanna focus on or emphasize in the midst of their. Um, you know, housing plans, and I just, I just think that's a, a, a very good one. And I saw some other heads shaking, yes, as um, as Eileen was talking about it, so I just wanted to. Throw my hat in that ring. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, okay, Austin, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council, I'm gonna share my screen for a slide deck. One second. Okay, can everyone see the slideshow, okay? Great. Thank you for the time this evening, I just wanted to provide an update on the two grants the city's been awarded. Uh, to support our brownfield redevelopment and re revitalization efforts. A lot of the phrases and titles while these grants are a mouthful, so apologies if it's hard to, to get it out cleanly. Um, we, we've been really fortunate to get a, a state grant this year and a federal grant, so I just wanted to provide an update on that. And talk about what the outcomes for those will be, uh, if we're successful and what next steps look like. I thought it'd be helpful just to start with, what is a, what is a brownfield, the, the term is thrown out a lot, and if you're not in government or in the development community. Someone like my wife, you just ask, is it an ugly piece of property, is it literally a brownfield? You know, it's just one of those things that gets thrown out a lot, but rarely defined. Um, I hope she's not watching, because if she is, I might get in trouble for calling her out like that. Um, but it's really a property that is complicated to develop, to expand, to reuse. By the presence or suspected presence of hazardous substances, pollutants and, and contaminants. There are way more brownfields than people think, um, the EPA estimates there's close to five hundred thousand in the U S. We have some very notorious brownfield sites in Tom Water. Um, these sites are also often the last um, to be developed. Because the uncertainties in contamination can be so expensive and so unpredictable for a developer that they would rather not touch it. And so they um, are often old historic properties with previous industrial uses. Sometimes they're gas stations that have been operating for a couple decades, sometimes they're a laundromat. Um, are some of the more common ones. But we, we, like I said, have some notorious brownfield sites, the, the brewery. Um, the Wash Dot property, we'll, we'll talk about later today. Um, that, while are a challenge for us locally, they, they honestly made us a really good candidate for these grants, so. Um, we were able to leverage these opportunities into, into some federal and state funding. And why brownfield redevelopment is so important? Um, you're able to increase your local tax base, you facilitate job growth, you use existing infrastructure, which is a much more sustainable way of development. Um, it improves and protects the environment, and really, most importantly, when I put on my economic development hat, it facilitates private investment. Um, so many communities are able to use brownfield grants as an economic development incentive, as a tool. Uh, because a lot of private development projects, if they need financing, can't get that financing unless there's been a phase one or phase two environmental assessment done. So being able to offer the funds to do this on the behalf of the private sector community. Or on the behalf of a, a, a public sector developer who's interested, or a combination of the two can be a really powerful incentive tool. To get um, investment over that, that uncertainty question. And so both grants we've been awarded are very similar in, uh, in what they allow us to do. So the funding from both the EPA Community Wide Assessment Grant and the Ecology Integrated Planning Grant. Um, will allow us to uh, do inventory characterization and assessment work uh, on the sites, environmental planning work. Um, we'll be able to do planning activities, reuse visioning activities, things like that, that. Will help us understand what the opportunities are once the site has been assessed and cleaned up. Um, it'll tell us what contamination is on the site, how we would clean that up and how much that would cost. Uh, which will be important later on, we'll talk about. And it also will uh, allow us to conduct community engagement. Um, and so the two target areas we're looking at with our grants are the brewery district and the Capitol Boulevard corridor. We have some priority sites that I'll share on the next slide. But the EPA grant was for five hundred thousand dollars, and that is really intended to catalyze job creation and private sector investment on brownfield sites. Um, it's also a community wide assessment grant, so we're not just limited to a single site, like the state grant that we'll talk about. And these EPA funds will focus on the brewery Knoll site and the warehouse site. And then we have the Ecology Integrated Planning Grant for two hundred thousand dollars. And that's intended really to help local governments like us make informed decisions. Uh, when considering to purchase or redevelop brownfield properties. So the timing of this grant for us uh, couldn't be any more perfect with our discussions with Wash Dot and our discussions around. What is the future of the former Wash Dot headquarters on Capitol? And so really, that two hundred thousand dollars will be focused on that site to make sure we can do the due diligence we need to. To make the most responsible and best decision uh, regarding the future of that site. Um, and then for both of these grants, we'll be hiring a, what the EPA calls a, a qualified environmental professional or a Q E P. It's essentially an environmental consultant uh, to help conduct the environmental work and also support grant implementation. So our goal is to have one consultant to help with both grants because of how similar they are, um, that's also the preferred. Model for the EPA ecologies to have a consultant support implementation. Um, so we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about that in the next steps, and I think I see a question from Councilmember Dolph.
Uh, I was gonna say, Mayor, is it okay if I ask my question?
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Austin, in the, when you're gonna be getting that. Um, environmental professional, in your request for proposals or repress, request for qualifications. Are you gonna put in like something like a data dashboard or some way to track, like to link all the pieces of community engagement and. Council and other jurisdictions and potential investors to do like a data dashboard?
I, hmm, so we will need to do all of that as a requirement of our grants and for our own purposes. Um, and these grants have regular reporting, I would love to turn that into a data dashboard, because we'll already have all that information. Um, but that, um, that will be something they can help with and something we'll, we'll do internally with our folks as well.
Right, I appreciate the internal piece, I'm hoping that we can make a note of how do we make that externally available and accessible, thanks, Austin.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, that'd be great, and um, one of the priorities for the EPA is around community engagement and transparency, and so. Everything we collect will, will need to find really solid ways of communicating externally, but thank you, I appreciate that.
Uh, Councilmember Kathy, you have a question?
Um, I do. Um. I'm, I, just a general question that I, I'm sure that Austin can answer is. Why are we doing this and spending money on property we don't own? I E. the Knoll and the warehouses?
Yeah, it's a good question, um, the, the goal of, of these grants and particularly the EPA grant is to. Catalyze redevelopment of use of these sites. Whether that's owned by a public agency or not, in most cases, they're owned by a, a private owner or a developer. Um, and the goal is to turn these now contaminated, blighted, underutilized areas that don't. Contribute positively to communities into assets. And so, these funds, that's really the, the balance there is. Uh, public funding is used to catalyze private investment, job creation and, and reuse that. Then contributes to the community once again. So for the ecology grant, we do need to have at least the interest of owning the site to be eligible for this grant, which is why the Wash Dot. Site fits, because we're exploring that, but for the EPA grant, uh, the sites do not need to be. Um, privately owned, I mean publicly owned, I'm sorry, they can be privately owned.
So, so we're going to be doing some of the now owner, who is a, a developer. And so forth, we're gonna be doing some of his work for him on our dime, basically.
I wouldn't say that, um, I wouldn't characterize it that way, this is not a cleanup grant. This is strictly an assessment grant, right, so this will strictly tell us what contaminants exist and then what. This is strictly an assessment grant, right? So this will strictly tell us what contaminants exist and then what. Cleanup plans and costs would look like. I also. You know, I don't know what the owner's long-term plans are. And the greatest barrier for new ownership, for new investment, for redevelopment of the brewery sites. Is the uncertainty of contamination. So. I honestly um think being able to do this with federal funds and state funding. Um, is one of the best things we can do to try and facilitate reuse and redevelopment of those sites. I think if we don't, we're really at risk of seeing those remain how they are for several more decades.
And when you're doing this, when this is being done or also. Uh, included in it. Uh, I don't know what term to use, but. Will the protection of the river come into um to play in this, or is it just? Strictly more the. Buildings and the building site. I. I'm concerned about us continuing to protect the, the river um as we do development, so. I'm sure that that'll be some kind of a, of a. Heads up or caveat in development plans.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, and a- and again, this is, this is all assessment, but it will tell us if there are plumes of contamination from the sites going into the river. So. Um, I think that's one of the, the positive things about this. It will help us protect not just those sites, but, but everything surrounding them.
Thanks, Austin. Had those. You really reassured my, answered and reassured me with those questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the questions.
Uh, thanks, and I, I think you answered this, Austin, but. It, this is there, there isn't a, a match we have to put up. For like a five hundred thou, this is all purely federal and state dollars that we get via grant. Okay.
Correct. We will have some in-kind match just through my own staff time and, and our other staff working on this, but there's not a cash match and. All of the work within the scopes that will finalize with both ecology and the EPA will be completely funded by the grants. Um, which is what made them even more attractive.
Got it. Thank you.
Have a few more slides I'll get through, but feel free to ask any questions. So these are the priority sites I mentioned, just to visualize them. There's the Knoll. The warehouse and then the former Wash Dot Headquarters, and like I mentioned, the ec- ecology. The Ecology Grant, the Integrated Planning Grant will focus on the Wash Dot site. And then the EPA grant will focus on more the Brewery District sites. The. Um. I anticipate we'll use all of the available funding on these sites, just given the complexity and size of these sites. Uh, if funding remains available, we are able to. Assess other sites within the Brewery District or within the Capitol Boulevard Corridor. So. Spending these grants will not be a challenge for us. Um, it's a four-year grant period, and I anticipate we will. We will end up expending the, the grant funds much sooner than that. And then when we think of our intended outcomes, we really want a clear understanding of contamination levels. We want to develop cleanup plans and cost estimates. We want community-driven redevelopment visions, which I'll talk a little bit more about in the next slide. We want to leverage additional funding. And we want to position ourselves for cleanup grants. That is really one of the main reasons for, for getting an assessment grant. The, the cleanup grants will be uh much larger. Um, and so being able to do this and follow their guidelines and accomplish what we need to do with this will position us well for a cleanup grant. Those cleanup grants are a little different in that they really require almost like a shovel-ready project, whether it's public or private. So we'll need to be a little further advanced, but I think um we'll position ourselves really well for that next.
Thank you, Mayor. Austin, for number one, this is a clear understanding of contamination levels. What about types of contamination? Right? Because there's federal levels and state levels. Are those gonna be two different levels? Because two different funding sources? So where is it? Listed or identified about the types of contamination and the thresholds?
Yeah, I should have, I should have re-stated that better, but well, it's not just the, the levels, but the type. Of contaminants we'll be looking at and the different thresholds. Um, and we have to follow um MATA, obviously, but also CIRCLA. So state and federal law and regulations around that.
Okay, thank you, Austin.
And then on the topic of community-driven redevelopment visions, I just wanted to bring attention to something. We've been really lucky to work with an organization called the Center for Creative Land Recycling. They're a nonprofit technical assistance provider for the EPA, so their whole mission is to work with jurisdictions like us. Um, to help guide us through the grant process and through the redevelopment process. And they're really um full of experts in redevelopment at all phases, uh particularly brownfield redevelopment. And we get to work with them at no cost because of the EPA's program with them. So they've been a huge asset and. We, we really thank them for their work and for the EPA support to continue doing that work. Um, but they've offered to coordinate what they call a Vision to Action Workshop in partnership with the city for the Wash Dot site. And so really, that Vision to Action model engages, um, you know, three hundred sixty degrees of, of the community. Um, staff, residents, community groups, regulators, local businesses, property owners. Um. People you wouldn't normally hear from, so this is a very formal and intentional way of engaging with community. They uh take environmental justice and equity incredibly seriously as an organization, and so. This was really developed in an effort to promote those principles and to make sure that. When we're talking about reuse visions, that we're engaging with voices we don't always hear from, that are hard to reach. That are historically disadvantaged or who may have often be um left out of these discussions. And so when they offered to coordinate that workshop in partnership with us, it uh not only really helps our redevelopment process. It really strengthened our grant application because the EPA appreciates that type of work. And it also leverages about fifty thousand dollars from C-Clear, uh again, at no cost to us. Um, to work with us to provide this, and so. We'll work with them uh over the next year to, to coordinate this Vision to Action model for the Wash Dot site. But it's something we're really excited about and something that really goes towards having, you know, community-driven um revitalization plans. And then our immediate next steps for this, uh, we're gonna release an RFQ for that environmental consultant. Again, we. Uh, ideally, one consultant to support both grants. Um, we're gonna finalize our scopes of work and our agreements with the EPA and ecology, so those will be coming to council in the near future. We're gonna prepare for grants implementation to start in twenty twenty-four. And we're gonna begin coordinating engagement with our community partners on this. This is one of those projects we'll be leaning in on our. Partners like the EDC, like the Chamber of Commerce, um. Like the Tom Water and Thurston Chamber of Commerce, uh like. Uh, those folks in the, in the development community that um can really contribute to this process and who are interested in engaging. Uh, in this process. So. With that, happy to take any additional questions.
I don't see any. Questions. I, oh, I think that was a great presentation. I think I really explained it well. Thank you, Austin. And we will be hearing much more of, of, on this topic.
Yeah, thank you. I'm really excited about these, having these tools, and this is just the start, but. I think it'll lead to some really good things for some sites that have been a challenge for us.
Yes. Uh, next item is the Business and Occupational Tax Code Update, and Shelley Carter is going to be presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Mine will be really brief. Um, I consider this. Something of administrative or housekeeping items. The city of Tom Water imposes a business and occupation tax. And we have adopted what's called a model ordinance. And sometimes legislative, uh, the legislative body will pass a bill that kind of adjusts the wording or makes some changes. Um, in this case, it really is uh just adding language. I don't have a real presentation, but I do have a visual aid. Uh, let me share that with you. Um, and what this does. Is it just updates our current city code. The code for business and occupation taxes is based on the model ordinance. And the bill, um, I think it was a Senate Bill fifty-one ninety-nine. Is really just adding a sentence. You can see uh the highlighted yellow there, so our existing city code is at the top. Um, can everyone see? My visual? Um, and then the middle is the proposed change, which just adds the sentence at the bottom. And based on what I've seen, it just looks like they've updated a couple of RCWs to clarify or modify. The definition of what printing and publishing newspapers and periodicals um is. This doesn't have any impact on revenue or collecting of the taxes or anything like that. It really is just. Um. Adding some wording and changing some wording for those definitions in the RCWs. So my proposal is to move the ordinance forward to City Council on the consent. Um, as a consent item, uh, this does need to be adopted before January first. It should be implemented by January first, twenty twenty-four. Pretty basic.
I see nodding heads. Does anyone opposed to putting this on the consent calendar for our next council meeting? Looks like that's a go, Shelley.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thanks. Alright, so. Uh, we're gonna do Mayor and City Administrator Report Reminder that we have an executive session. Uh, and we will, um, I'll update you on that. So, uh, Council, uh, Administrator Parks, do you want to go first?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm glad to see you, and I hope you all had a wonderful holiday weekend. Um, uh, I just have two items for you today. Uh, one is, I, I promised in an email earlier this afternoon. Um, to give you some information about the um reason you uh may have experienced some trouble with your uh email. This past holiday weekend, which I will share with you, uh, was uh felt and shared by many other folks. Uh, here at uh City Hall as well and across the, across the city. So essentially, um. Microsoft is going to no longer provide support for the desktop version of Office sometime in the very near future. So we are needing to migrate to a subscription-based Office three sixty-five product. Um, we've pushed back that migration um as long as we could, um, because it is a, a bit more costly. Um, but the, the decision was made to migrate earlier this year, um, and then the project to implement that new platform was developed and. And set into motion. Um, the project was delayed by several months, um, because we needed to resolve issues with the e-. Most specifically with the email archiving product. So Microsoft doesn't have a good way to help local governments who are required to archive. And then pull up email records um for public records retention and public records request purposes. So we had to find and coordinate and implement a third-party uh software to help with that first. Uh, so we resolved the email, that particular email issue, and we were uh planning to complete. The migration to the new software platform over a several weeks that would end somewhere around the end of the year. Um, department by department, so we would have notified a department and migrated the, um, every, um, every department one by one over the course of the next several weeks. There were some, um, uh, both internal as well as external factors that. Uh, that required us to compress, compress that migration schedule down to a single weekend. Um, uh, not the least of which we discovered as we had an internal test group, there were some calendar syncing issues. Um, that were uh creating a lot of uh difficulties for those who were testing this out on an individual basis. Um, and then we also received a fairly short notice that. Um, uh, Wash Dot and others were going to be pulling new fiber in and around the City Hall complex. Um, sometime the end of November, first week of December, we weren't really sure. Um, that uh switch and that change in the fiber would have created a lot of havoc for us. Um, at the city because that is where the backbone for our TCOM and EMS and law, law enforcement firefighters. Um, uh, a lot of the city functions um rely on that particular infrastructure. So, uh, we took the opportunity to compress this migration schedule. In order to avoid the potential impacts that would have been created by that um fiber replacement process. So. Um, the good news is we, we suffered, um, although we suffered some, um, some hiccups over the course of the last several days. Um, we now will likely be able to continue work during that fiber outage without. Noticeable impacts. That's, that's the goal. Um, and so, uh, apologies um from me to you all, uh, for not having enough information uh in advance. Um, of. This, this trouble, um, I did. The morning, we had a good response on behalf of both our IT uh folks as well as from uh. Uh, Brittany, uh, McClanahan, the new executive assistant. I think she communicated with each of you, and um. So that is the, uh, that is the, um, the explanation I have, and uh Lance is here if you have further uh questions about that. Um. Uh, related, there was a question about the um, the new council. Um, IT devices, there were several of, uh, I believe there's five uh cellphones that will be issued. There are a couple of laptops. Um, we do have those products in place. Um, but instead of putting those products into use by you all and then having to take them back. And reset and recalibrate and reload everything else um uh that we were going to be doing with this shift to the new software. Um, we made the choice to um wait to get those uh products to you until we have this new um. Uh, platform updated and installed, so that we're not having you come in multiple times um to try and, um. Deal with this issue in terms of having your equipment work for you on the, um, uh, right out the, right out the door and. And um hopefully saving you from some challenges. So those are, that's one update. I don't, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Okay, and then uh the last thing I would like to, um, to do, I, I want to also concur with um some of you, your sentiments. Austin did a great job of giving you an update on those grants. Those are, um, uh, I believe a huge opportunity for the city. Um, I was also able to communicate uh about. Potential brewery redevelopment at, um, at the Thurston County Commissioners Meeting this morning. I was asked by interim county manager, Robin Campbell, to attend the board meeting and provide them with some general updates. On um different things that we have um in the, uh, in the works. Uh, we don't have anything specific. I did share with them that um the city of Tom Water. Uh, continues to believe that brewery redevelopment is an important component of our economic development strategy. As well as just a, a good, a thing for the environment as well as the community. And I um shared with them that we're, I use the uh pulling thread analogy, that we're pulling every thread we can to its. To its endpoint. Um, if that's a positive endpoint or a dead end, we're, we're gonna pull it no matter what. Um, our primary concerns, um, our, uh, are to make sure we understand the environmental contamination. Um, it is uh absolutely necessary to understand what is, what are the contaminants? In the ground, the soil, what are the contaminants, if any, in the groundwater? What are the contaminants, if any, in the buildings themselves? And we need to know what those are in order to be able to understand what the cleanup costs might be. In order to be able to provide some level of certainty. Um, that then facilitates and helps um with that private investment, which creates the, the jobs and the tax revenues for. Uh, for our community. So, uh, just wanted to share with you that I had an opportunity to visit the county commissioners today. Uh, and uh give them uh some brief updates as well. Um, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise. That's it for me.
Alright. Thank you, Lisa. Um, I just have a couple of items on this week. Uh, one of our firefighters are paramedics. Roger, uh, paramedic firefighter Roger Kossi was awarded the lifesaving award uh on, in May. Twenty-sixth of this year, Roger was attending a track meet in Yakima where his daughter was participating. And one of the runners uh collapsed on the track, and Roger immediately ran down and. Uh, helped re- resuscitate that poor individual. Uh, after two rounds with the AED. The, the runner, she regained consciousness, uh, her pulse came back and she started breathing on her own. And so this is a great opportunity when, um, you know, when our. Our firefighters and paramedics are still out in the community doing their everyday life things. They can still serve the community. So. He was presented with that lifesaving award and that happened actually yesterday. Also, I just want to remind everyone that this Saturday is the twentieth annual tree lighting festival. And it's from one to five thirty Saturday at the Tomater Main Fire Station next to City Hall. And then so the tree lighting ceremony will happen at about five thirty. With that, it's gonna be holiday crafts, school choir performances, pictures of Santa Claus. And lighting of the Christmas tree. And so they also are collecting non-perishable food items for the Thurston County Food Bank. And the Santa stops, as you know, Santa used to ride on the fire truck and going through the community, but now we do it in. By going to six city parts during that period of time. And so there will be, they also be collecting again, non-perishable food items. And, and the city website has that information. And then Tomwater also has a holiday assistance program. And that is for children in the Tomwater School District. They are, we are partnering with the Tomwater Education Foundation and the Tomwater School District. And get child's gift tags are available at City Hall. So if someone is interested in providing. Getting one of those tags to provide a present, please come by and pick up one of those gifts. So, any questions? With that, now we are going to go into executive session and everyone remember that. There, you'll leave this meeting, go to the executive session, which has a different link. And then we will come back and adjourn this meeting after that. There will be no action taken. So the council will now meet in the executive session to discuss a. Potential litigation pursuant to RCW forty-two point three oh dash one one zero. Sub one, sub I. So we will recess this meeting and go into.
Mayor, before you go. Before you go, I'm sorry. Some of us will have an issue logging on too.
Okay, so in the email for Brittany at seven something this morning, it had the link to both of those emails. So if you can find.
That was not working.
That was. Okay, there should be a new link. Hold on, let me look. I'm looking at email. It should be another. Let's see. So the link in Brittany's emails was not working?
No, they weren't working.
Alright, so that was the one that, that she sent this morning at seven twenty-two in the morning?
Yes, those were working.
Alright, so is there a way for staff to resend that? Cause I don't. See.
I, I'm sure that we can re-forward the original email. To everyone. Before we leave though, could you please announce the expected duration and time of.
Yes, I was waiting until everyone could do that. So we're expecting that to be, and I believe I heard fifteen minutes. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so we will come back at seven. Fifty. I can't, yeah, seven fifty. PM. So if, we'll quickly get that email sent to you. I think Lisa just sent it. Alright.
Thank you.
We're in recess. So this is a notification that the council is going to extend the executive session for another five minutes. So we will be returning at seven fifty-five. Thank you. Everyone is coming back, so I'm going to reconvene the meeting as soon as I'm in a forum. And I have quarter. And so with that, with no further business and no action to take from our, from our executive session, we will be adjourning this meeting and I appreciate everyone this evening and we're adjourned at 7:55. Thank you. Good night.